Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, School Committee Meeting here at Tingsborough High School. My name's Anthony Tenero, I officially call this meeting to order. We will start with introductions to my left.
Bari Teeks, student representative.
Jeff Bo.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Flanagan, superintendent.
Danielle Athanas.
Ryan McMahon.
Dustine Puma.
Robert Mullin.
Good evening, Joe Messina, business administrator.
Thank you, everyone. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'll accept a motion to approve the school committee minutes from 1924 and the budget subcommittee minutes from 11024.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries. Seven zero zero tonight. Citizen time? Mr. Ogden? Nothing? I don't believe you're a citizen of Tingsborough, so no. Perfect. Correspondents?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so you know, I did inform our sent an email this past week to the Finance Committee to invite them to our February meeting where we will present our initial budget. I've not received response yet, but generally we do that as a joint meeting with the Finance Committee on the end of February, so that email is out.
Perfect, thank you. Personnel, none at this time. Share the success. Bari.
First of all, Happy New Year, everyone. I was, I missed the last meeting because they sent me home. Because of the snow.
Can we just clarify that we offer for you to go home early?
It was a unanimous decision, we can say that. Okay, so at the elementary school, we had a community building assemblies for students and staff. During the assembly, we reviewed the meaning of our Stripes core values and students provided examples of ways to show their stripes within school and commu- within the school and community. We also introduced our new incentive program called Super Cafe All-Star. Students will earn possum tickets for showing their stripes and following our Stripes promises in the cafeteria. The tickets will be randomly drawn every Friday and students will have the opportunity to win a fun prize, such as breakfast with the principals or Friday DJ in the caf. With January comes the anticipation of the Great Kindness Challenge. TES is a kindness-certified school and we will once again join over nineteen million students in over thirty-nine thousand schools. Over nine hundred fifty million acts of kindness are completed across the globe during this special week. The Great Kindness Chal- The Great Kindness Challenge will be held during the week of January twenty-second to ju- the twenty-sixth this week. On January twenty-fourth tomorrow and the twenty-fifth, our staff will hold virtual conferences with parents and guardians. At the middle school, rehearsals are happening each day at the middle school for the upcoming performance of The Wizard of Oz. Middle and high school students have been filling hallways with energy, dance, and song. The robotics club is about to start and we are hoping for a great turnout. The student council is running a canned food drive for a local food pantry that concludes on January nineteenth. On January twelfth, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Hook, and Mr. Pollitt did a presentation for all three grades on the meaning of Martin Luther King Day and Dr. King's continued legacy. Sixth graders will enjoy the pyramids and Pharaoh's presentation coming this week, coming last, that happened last week on January nineteenth. Teachers have continued to work with our comprehensive comprehension routine with students. Students are well-versed in top-down webs, two-column notes, summarizing and high, a high-level questioning. During wind block, students have been working on specific math skills and writing across curriculum areas. At the high school, congratulations to the THS-TMS band on their winter concert performance that took place last week. In the latest MIAA power rankings, ice hockey and girls' and boys' basketball are all ranked in the top fifteen for their divisions. Girls' basketball is currently ranked second in the Division Four rankings. Gymnastics, Alpine skiing, and swim and dive are also having a successful, uh, successful seasons. Congratulations to DECA, which had twelve students qualify for the statewide competition after completing in the Northeast Regional Competition. Tickets for The Wizard of Oz are now on sale. You will hear more about the show as the theater presents later in the meeting. Congratulations to the January Students of the Month, Gianna Donato, Sam Chan, Sophia Shambly, and Carly Demento. Thank you.
Thank you, Bari.
Mr. Chair, I just had a point of notification here based on what Bari just announced. We did have twelve students qualify for DECA. It did not, their request to go to the state made did not make the agenda in time because it just recently happened. They plan to come with a formal proposal at our next meeting. Is it okay with the committee if they begin preliminary work? It's, it's an annual trip at this point, which is great that we always have kids qualify. So I would just seek the committee's support to kind of support that. Not a formal vote, but just kind of a...
I'm in full support.
And then we'll, we'll have all the details for you in your next meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item nine B out of order.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Nine B is going to be taken out of order.
So, um, thank you for having me here, that's not me. More so at theater, so I'm going to invite them in because they're a little surprised to hear that they are represented.
They look so good.
Are you?
Okay, okay. Are we sitting? I'm getting in the chairs. There's a question.
Oh, gosh.
You might have some difficulty sitting.
I don't know. I'm a little big right now.
You should have got more appropriate chairs.
Why can't we order?
Are you okay?
You good?
Yeah, I made it.
So we're expecting to have Olivia Valchin, Sabrina Ogden, Julian Paray, and Caitlin O'Geehan, who are some of clearly the main characters in the upcoming Wizard of Oz, so I will let them take them in.
Hello, everyone. We're honored to be here to talk to you about some things we've been working on in theater. I'm Julian Paray, I'm a senior.
I'm Olivia, I'm a junior.
I'm Sabrina, I'm a junior.
And I'm Caitlin, I'm a sophomore. All right, so we're going to start off by talking about the process of our theater, especially this year. We all came into auditions in November and, you know, immediately it's just like everyone's supporting everyone. It's a great community to be a part of, really. And then, you know, skyrockets right into rehearsals, so, you know, we've been working for the past two months on everything, getting costumes put together, lighting, sound, the show, you know. All of it fits together and it's just, it's so nice to work with everyone, whether it's tech or actors or even the adults that are with us. It's just such a great community for all of them.
So our director is Mrs. Katie Leahy, and our assistant director is Steph Delishen. She's an alumni. Together, they work together to put scene, scene work, like, our choreographer is Tara Pelletier and other alumni. And our music director is Rob Brzezinski. He makes us sound great. He helped us last year for Newsies. We won a chorus award out of five of the Tammy Awards that we won, so he got us to that point. We also won five Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild awards for that show. So it's a great group of adults that help us learn about theater and...
Yeah, and as a team, we're able to win all those awards for the musical, you know. Even when it's independent actor awards, it's really not possible without all of us helping each other out.
Aside from our musical, we also have MTTG competition, which stands for Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild. This is where we get to compete with several other schools and really showcase our acting and our technical capabilities. There is no singing and dancing in this show, so we really get to hone in on emotions that you might not see in a musical. We get the opportunity not only to like represent what our program is and what Ms. Leahy has taught us, but we also get to make friendships with people we've never met before. And it's, when we go to these competitions, it doesn't feel like a competition. It feels like a community and you're celebrating other people rather than like it being like, you know, I want to win the award. It's more like you're celebrating other people and you're proud for the people next to you.
So last year, we performed Little Women as our MTTG show, and it was a good success. We moved on to semifinals and went to Westford Academy and performed there, and we were praised for our connections on stage. We, Olivia, won a costuming award, Sabrina won a stage manager award, and our assistant student director Natalie won an award, and then three other acting awards, so we're really proud of that, so.
Yeah. She was one of the acting awards.
She, yeah, she was.
Very humble.
Great job. Thank you guys for coming this evening.
Do we want to move on to the actual...
Then we'll mark.
We got more.
Yeah, these are some of the shows. Yeah, some pictures we've done.
These are, here are the awards.
That's us with our awards. Very cool, very cool. All right. Yeah, there you go. Okay, so this year's show, if you can't tell, is The Wizard of Oz. I know, guys, it kind of looks like we're doing Mean Girls, but, um, so I'm playing the Cowardly Lion. I'm also the head student costumer and I have been acting and costuming since sixth grade, so, you know, coming along pretty well costume-wise.
She obviously does a great job. I'm playing Dorothy Gale and I've been doing Tingsborough Theater since the seventh grade.
I'm Glenda. I'm also a stage manager mentor and I've also assisted with the choreography for the show.
And I'm the wicked witch. I've been performing since sixth grade, so...
So next week, starting on Thursday, we have our performances kicking off. From Thursday to Saturday, we have shows at seven PM. That is from the first to the third, and then on the Sunday show, we have a two PM o'clock show. This show really gives us the opportunity to show that, like, you have people along the way that even though you can be angry at them, like seen through Aunt Em, which is Dorothy Gale's aunt, you may be angry at people who give you advice, but ultimately they're the people who support you and are going to guide you to success. And we hope that you follow us down the yellow brick road and come see Wizard of Oz. I was going to keep that in, guys.
Nice plug.
Thank you for having us today. It gives us the opportunity to speak about what we love to do, so.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, sir.
You guys are the reason that we all sit here.
So do we have any questions, or there might be some questions, so you can't go anywhere just yet.
Can't leave yet because Mr. McMahon is definitely...
Well, I'm glad you told me it would play because I was confused.
Yeah, I figured you might be.
Yeah, I just looked that way. How long does it take to get into costume and do all the makeup? And do you do it yourself or who helps you?
Well, right, right before this, it took us about a half hour, but during the show, it'll have to take us five minutes because if you've seen The Wizard of Oz, you know we play other characters before. So I'm going to be in a completely different costume and my normal skin color, and then, um, and then I'll come backstage, and then in five minutes, I will turn green.
Yeah, and so I also designed the hair and makeup. So I've been working with our actors who's playing, I mean, myself, our Tin Man, who's Evan Cody, and then our Scarecrow, Gray Coy, to teach themselves the makeup, but also allow people on our costuming team to learn from that and help them when they need it because we all have max fifteen minutes to get from our Kansas outfits to our Oz outfits. And with all the face paint stuff, it takes a great team effort to do that, so it's definitely quicker than we've experienced in the past, but, yeah, it's a learning experience.
And this is the first show that we've done as a program in a long time where the costuming is, is pretty hefty. Some of our ensemble members have five and six costume changes. So the amount of costumes that we have, there's racks and racks and racks and racks of costumes. So they have lots of quick changes throughout the whole show.
So you've all been doing theater for a few years. What's your best memory or what do you learn the most from doing it?
Do you want to start?
I think actually Caitlin. One of my favorite memories, your first show was...
Beauty and the Beast.
Beauty and the Beast, right? We were backstage and the show was going on. Backstage moments are some of my favorite moments because everything's happening so fast and you're just trying to remember what's going on in the moment. But we were backstage probably like changing or something and she goes, "This is so much fun." And you could just see in that moment that this was something that she loved and she's going to be...
Um, I think my favorite memory was for me when I was in eighth grade. It was the year we just got back from COVID, so we had to do an outdoor show, which was Cinderella. I played the evil stepmother and there was this time we were rehearsing and it started downpouring, like out of nowhere. And it was just so like, we were all just like dancing and singing in the rain, I mean, before we had to go back inside, but it was just like such like a bonding moment for all of us. I just think it's something I won't forget.
It was very hot out there.
Yeah, it was very, we were very grateful for the rain.
That was a great show.
Thank you.
One of my favorite moments was my eighth grade show. I was the fairy godmother in Cinderella, and it was the scene where like Cinderella goes in the carriage and like kind of gets spun around, and I started getting teary-eyed because I realized it's something, like theater is something I want to do for the rest of my life, and I realized like this is where I want to be, so, yeah.
I think for me, I love the MTG experience. I love having that whole day, you're kind of growing together, you're seeing new things together. I also loved Newsies. Tech Week is the last week before our show, and everything was just so chaotic, but it was so much fun and we all got a lot closer. I think that was one of my favorite memories.
Yeah, sure. Great.
As a, as a theater mom for the last, since my girls have done it with you guys forever, I can, I can honestly say I've never been disappointed by a show you guys put so, so much effort in. You guys always do a fabulous, wonderful job, and just seeing you here, I know that I'm going to have to get tickets now for next week, even though I won't have a child in there for the first time.
You can link with them, purchase tickets at tingstheater dot...
They're selling out fast, guys. They're selling out fast.
I have to see if Michael, if we can go out as a date night and go see you guys perform again because you do put a phenomenal show on.
Thank you.
Mrs. Leahy does a great job.
She has, she very much has.
If I could...
Yes, go ahead.
And again, if we can ever support you, please let us know how we can support you with a bus to MTG or wherever, whatever, however we can support you. I'm sure we are as a collective in support of you.
Yeah, we really appreciate that, yeah.
Just, just for people at home, I know that Tech Week is crazy and you're here till nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, working on all the kinks and details as a former theater dad, I understand that. Can you tell us, give us a sense, how many students are involved in this production?
Let's say around sixty to seventy.
Think about that. Think about that. We have eight hundred kids on this campus, so almost ten percent of them are involved in this one show, from, from set design to theater to lighting to performance. It's amazing, so, so we wish you all the very best. I don't know if there are any more questions, but I, you look so uncomfortable at that makeup on.
Me?
And the hat.
The hat needs to be fixed. Glad it happened tonight, not a week from Thursday.
Work in progress.
All right, working on the kinks, perfect.
Yep.
For the rest of the committee, do you guys have anything?
Just one, one more, just for each of you. Obviously, you've all done many shows and been put on many hats, no pun intended for...
Thanks, Dad.
What would you say to younger students that might be interested in joining theater and how they could get involved?
I would say that just go into an audition and don't have the fear. There's so many other people who are just as scared as you, and like I know my sixth grade year, me and Olivia, when our show terrified, and you just learn that like there's no shame in being who you are, and like these shows show you like lessons of life, so it's not just a fun show where you get to sing and dance. It gives you guidance of who you're going to become as a person.
Yeah, I think a lot of the middle schoolers this year came in and were like, they were like, "We're scared to sing in front of the high schoolers," and we're like, "We're all here doing the same thing," you know, which is again why it's so great because they come in nervous and we're all like, "It's nothing to be scared about," you know? We're all doing the same thing, we're all here to have fun and learn from each other, so just go for it and everyone will be here to support you.
You really need some of friends that you'll keep with you your whole life. You build like a great bond between everyone you work with, and you can find something new that you love to do. I never sang until my seventh grade year, and then I discovered that's something I really love and it makes me feel happy doing, so.
And you have a voice of an angel.
She does.
Me too. All right, well, thank you guys for coming out. Thanks for dressing up. We really appreciate it, and we do know somebody who could probably get us tickets if we can't get them, so.
Website's right there.
I won't, okay?
This is going to be another, this is going to be a fifteen-minute process, so.
Thank you all.
Break a leg, guys.
Thank you to the parents for coming out.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Do your Dorothy skip.
All right, at this time, we'll go back to our regular scheduled programming. Subcommittee meetings, capital asset update, which I will take. We did meet last Wednesday night after our school building committee meeting. As capital asset, there's, we have a new way of doing it now, which I absolutely love. We'll get into that at a future meeting when we actually go through the things, but we identify the top five or six things as a committee that we think that we'll move forward with. We haven't taken a formal vote yet. There was some more questions that we wanted answered on some of the topics, and some of it has to do with the ARPA funding versus free cash and things of that nature, so stay tuned, more to come. Unfinished business, MSBA update.
Okay, we'll jump into our slide deck at this point, just a reminder of some upcoming meetings. We have a budget subcommittee meeting on January thirtieth at six-thirty PM. February sixth, we will, Mr. Messina, we, Mr. Messina will present the FY twenty-five revenue projection at that point, and February twenty-seventh is that joint meeting with the Finance Committee, which will be right here, where we'll present our initial FY twenty-five budget. We also have a school building committee meeting on February twenty-eighth. As we get into the MSBA updates, we are excited to say that we have a tour scheduled for this Saturday. Several of you have already RSVP'd. If you haven't, please do so with Mrs. Fairbanks so we can ensure there are enough hard hats. Again, we're asking that the committee members wear closed-toe shoes and long pants. Model classroom delivery next, on the twentieth and the twenty-second, furniture that will be potentially installed or purchased for the Tingsborough Middle School will be made available in the Tingsborough Middle School library. That following week, J C J Architects, Emily and Nikki will be up to do really professional development for the staff to see how to use the furniture, how to stack the furniture, how to organize the furniture, and how you can have really a flexible classroom and do some kind of professional development for the staff. We will have that furniture available for the next five to six weeks so that staff members from the middle school can take their classes in there, try out the furniture, and then actually respond on a Google survey and give feedback that will drive some of our decision-making. So I didn't know, I just wanted to throw this out there, on February twenty-seventh, if the committee wanted to, we could actually meet over there at six-thirty prior to this meeting, so you could kind of see what furniture is there and what the potential new classrooms will look like, so I think that's worth taking a walk over. So throwing that out there, I'm sure everyone would like to see it. I think, I think we're all excited about the upcoming building. So that's all, the furniture update. Right now, they're continuing with the exterior work and framing is wrapping up on Building C. Today, they actually poured the foundations on the roof for some of the electrical equipment. They're finishing pouring foundation work on Building C as well, and they're doing underground work on Building B, which is the gym and cafeteria. So a lot of progress being made, though we can't see it because of the tenting, we'll be able to see it Saturday and see where it's going. So everything is on schedule there, actually a little bit ahead of schedule right now, so that's all trending well. And we did receive some good news that, that was reported at the last school building committee meeting, so I'll just share it with this committee meeting. We talked about that four-point-one anticipated revenue coming from the MSBA. It's actually four-point-six-seven-five million, so it's more than anticipated, which is great. Another number that we projected a few weeks ago, we just got an update on that, Mass Saves rebate, we had hoped to be around four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. It's trending to four-hundred-and-ninety thousand now, some of the fifteen thousand. So numbers are trending in the right direction, which is good, so that was, you know, there was some question at town meeting for, well, how real are these numbers? Well, they're very real now, so, so that's good for our community, so that's where we are with the, with the MSBA update.
All right, very good. Thank you. Nine B, we already went to. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Teaching, learning.
Oh.
Mr. Woodlock.
Oh, jeez, I missed the whole section.
I'll be brief.
Yes, sorry. I'm a budget development.
Bit of news and just an update on some of the work that we've been doing collectively within our schools. We haven't talked about this before, but we have a Curriculum and Instruction Council. It's made up of myself, some of the building administrators, and seventeen teacher leaders. We meet monthly, and the agenda varies, honestly, but we talk about instruction needs, trends, challenges that we're having. We do a lot of sharing of what's working, you know, where are we meeting with, you know, struggles or resistance or barriers or anything like that, we try to give each other ideas to take back to departments, teams, grade levels in their own particular meetings. So it's, it's, honestly, I just want to give a shout-out to the groups, they're doing amazing work. They're truly being leaders, they're modeling new inclusive practices, they're doing it in their classroom, they're bringing it back out, they're sharing it with their peers, and, I mean, personally, I don't feel like there's any PD that's more valuable than teachers working with other teachers, so these, these are the people that are on the front lines and they're doing it and they're taking the time to be teacher leaders, so I wanted to give them a shout-out just for all the work that they're doing. So some of the highlights so far this year, again, a lot of discussions about inclusive practice being employed. We've done some lesson studies, looking at people bringing and being confident enough and, and willing to put their own lessons on display for everyone to look at and say like, all right, what's working? What can you give me for advice? And just modeling that behavior, which is awesome for our teachers, it's great for our kids. We're taking a closer look at the middle school ELA program. As you may know, and I'm sure we've talked about, the elementary school just went through an overhaul of their ELA program. The high school has recently, so I met with Katie Leahy, Kevin Redman, who is our teacher leader, department chair at the high school, Katie Leahy from the middle school, and Principal Pollitt, and so we started just talking about like, what's this going to look like? Who do we need involved? What kind of questions do we need to ask to make sure that that middle school program is staying as current as it can? It's been a while. And lastly, really promoting and modeling the MTSS concepts, which is a lot of different stuff. We've talked about it a lot of times here, and there's a lot that goes into it. In fact, I'll be presenting at the February staff meetings for each building just to talk about all of the different initiatives that are going on in the district and how they interconnect, because if you don't have those conversations, people can be like, "We're doing so many different things, we don't have a clue what exactly we're supposed to be doing." So I want to make sure with the principals and the administrators' help that we are communicating effectively with teachers so that they know all the work that's going in, in their professional development, in their classrooms, is all tied to the same goal, which is to be really inclusive, make sure that we're providing learning opportunities for all of our students. So there's one. The second thing I just wanted to share with you, I, I had a good discussion with Kate Walsh at, who is a teacher at the elementary school, but she's also our, our lead teacher for our EL program. And last year, I think we talked a little bit about what an amazing celebration of us, an evening we had. It was really great. So the previous year apparently had been kind of small. Last year was great. This year, we're actually going to combine it with the Celebration for Learning at the elementary school, so looking for even a, you know, bigger, excuse me, elementary, elementary school, yeah. So, and middle school, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. So we're a different venue, different place, so we're looking to build that program, not just through the elementary families, but through the middle school families as well. But it's going to be a great night. Everyone's invited to come and check it out. You will probably get a formal invite from Kate at some point, so no pressure, but if you can make it, we'd love to have you there. It really was a wonderful evening to see the diversity in our, in our community being celebrated. And that's it for me. Any questions?
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Woodlock?
Good job. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think I can go to new business. Fiscally, your twenty-five budget development. Thank you. All right, I think I can go to new business. Fiscal year twenty-five budget development.
I will turn it right over to Mr. Messina, who's been working with the budget subcommittee on this.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So, um, back on January tenth, uh, the budget subcommittee had its first meeting of this budget cycle. And as always, we focused on the big rocks of your budget and, um, salaries, out-of-district tuitions, transportation and utilities. Um, you can see the big rocks up here, um, on the screen. Um, we currently are budgeting two hundred and forty-three point three staff persons. That is down from the two forty-seven point eight positions that we budgeted last year. So a change in four and a half staff. And that was primarily, um, as we looked as the, as the operation developed and we started the school year, there were four paraprofessional positions that, um, the schools, you know, again, being fiscally prudent, said we can work without filling these four positions. The other half position was an admin assistant position, um, on this district where, uh, two positions were combined into a single person, uh, on this campus. So taking those two hundred and forty-three staff people into, uh, next year, that gave us a salary figure of slightly over twenty million dollars or about six hundred thousand dollars more than last year's budget. Next large item to look at, as always, is the out-of-district tuition roster. And this number probably fluctuates a number of times as the school year develops and as the budget season develops. As of January tenth, uh, we're projecting that number to be, uh, two point six million dollars, which is about eighty-two thousand dollars less than our projected number of two point seven million dollars last year. And again, that number is, is a number that as we get closer and closer to the, the final budget, I hope to refine that a little bit more, um, to get a true idea of our out-of-district roster and the needs of those students. Transportation, we have that broken out between two lines, the regular ed, uh, transportation line as well as the specialized, uh, transportation. And the large jump there is, uh, due to when we developed the fiscal twenty-four budget, we were using the van rate that DBUS had for us for probably about seven years. In May of, uh, last year, after our budget was set, DBUS came to us and gave us a new three-year pricing for vans. So this doesn't represent any increase in vans. This is simply an increase in next year's rate, um, as DBUS has given it to us. So that is why, um, the vans jumped up thirty-one percent from last year. And the last item in our big rocks is our utility costs. And you can see that is jumping about twenty-two percent. And that is more of a victim of being in extremely favorable rates that we have in place for this season. That rate cycle is coming to an end and I've been, uh, receiving, uh, natural gas and electricity pricing from our, uh, our partner, Power Options. It continues to trend downward, but as of January fifth, we had electricity going up about twenty-eight percent from this current year and natural gas going up sixty-nine percent from our current rate. Favorable because in September, that was forty percent for electricity and ninety-five percent for natural gas. So we, I continue to look at these. We're not locked into any rates beyond October of twenty-four. It's my hope that if we can manage to have a quiet winter and early spring season, that that natural gas price will continue to drop and that electricity price will continue to drop. So again, until the final budget is developed, I hope to, to get that number down to a little bit more palatable number for us.
Next slide, Mr. Woodlock.
If I could on that, Joe, real quick. Our solar panels, how is that affecting that number?
The solar panels on the, this roof continue to give us a savings. I don't have that number right in front of me. I could probably get it before the end of the meeting. Just to give you an idea as to what we've saved in terms of if we were paying National Grid to get the electricity off, you know, to us compared to what we're making on the roof. And you're locked into the rates on that roof at nine point eight cents a kilowatt hour, which.
Joe, sorry, just from August of twenty nineteen to June of twenty twenty-three, we saved a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars on solar panels. That's your number.
Yeah.
To me.
Okay, perfect.
So yes, I continue to trend that month over month when we get the solar bill and say, what would, what would this energy cost us if National Grid was bringing those same kilowatt hours into the, into the building for us?
I guess my point is that those numbers would be a lot worse if.
Yes.
If we didn't have the solar power.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, and I think, um, I think it was pointed out that when we were at the budget subcommittee I, committee meeting, I had about a ten-year average of the utility cost. And if you compared ten years ago to this year, it's not this. It's a pretty smooth, you know, we've had high points and we've dropped lower, but, you know, with, with the ability to lock in with some rates with power options, we enjoy a larger buying power with them. And it gets us to, you know, a, a fifty-three cent per therm natural gas price when if you look at your bills, you're probably over a dollar. I mean, I know the aggregate with the town, um, for electricity is about ten cents. We're currently paying nine point three cents. So we have some great rates. Unfortunately, these rates were, we locked in probably four years ago into these rates. So again, it's my hope that things are smoothing off, maybe they smoothed out a little bit more. We can lock in at something or at the very least see where we're at and get this number down a little bit more.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Woodlock? Oh, thank you. Working off a different screen here. Say Mr. Woodlock over and over again before I look at.
I'm going to change the slide.
We were, uh, we were snowed and iced out at our meeting on January sixteenth, but for these other expenses, most of them, uh, we, at this point in time, were just carrying in last year's figures. The only thing changing on this, uh, is the technology line. There are some firewall subscriptions that Mr. Piper has pointed out that we need to, um, put into place. That's going to increase his budget, uh, about five, twenty-five thousand dollars. The undistributed grant funding, again, that is, that is funds in these grants that are targeted for specific items that aren't in this budget anywhere, including funding in the grants that are, uh, dedicated to Notre Dame as part of the federal program, as well as, uh, what the state calls resolution funding, which is monies that we have to set aside for, um, homeschool students and other, um, private needs of students, um, books or any, any supplies like that, that we have to track separately from our expenses. So we need to remove that from your budget model, otherwise we'll have an unbalanced budget. So that number's rising slightly, uh, by about fifty-five hundred. And we are entering our first year of the accreditation cycle. Basically, this is a small amount set aside, uh, for Mr. Ogden to appoint a chair, uh, for the accreditation process, as well as a few members of a site team to come out for a two-day initial site visit. So we're setting aside five thousand dollars for that, uh, for the beginning of the process. The pension line that you see there, that is the grant amount that, uh, when we use a grant for salaries, we have to set aside, uh, nine percent of the salary figure for federal grants. That's actually going down by about twenty-one thousand, but as we'll see in the revenues when they're presented at the next meeting, that is due to the fact that in this year, we have used the last of our COVID funding from the state on the school side. So we're not using that as part of next year's budget. So the, um, pension charge, charge that's related to that is obviously going as well. And the chargebacks from the town, we project as being, uh, neutral. So that gives us a preliminary expense figure of slightly over twenty-seven million, um, at this point in time. And, and one thing I will mention is that does not include any additional staffing. The superintendent has, has mentioned it before and as Mr. Woodlock's pointed out at, at many of his presentations, we have had a large focus on, uh, ELA at the schools and the number one desire in terms of staffing is to get a K to A literacy coach, um, to better enhance all of the investment that we've made in the ELA process the last couple of years. And that's where we're at right now.
All right, very good. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Messina? Thank you, sir, for all your hard work and to the committee. Let's hit send on that. Now we go back to finance.
Right back at me.
Right back at you.
For signing of bills, we had two, four, six, eight, ten, eleven warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. As always, that list of warrant numbers, accounts and amounts are in your drive. Nothing for payroll tonight. I will do that, uh, update at the next meeting. And that is all I have for finance tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Messina. School committee discussion, Farley.
Uh, I'd like to just thank the, uh, the theater for coming today. Thanks to them. That's all I have for today.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set, thanks.
Good, thank you.
I, I would also like to say, oh my goodness, I would also like to thank the theater for coming today, um, and tell them not good luck, but break a leg in the upcoming shows next week. And I'm excited to see them with my budding thespian who is anxiously waiting for middle school so she can join them in a couple of years. So break a leg, guys.
You know why I say break a leg?
I knew and that has now slipped my mind tonight.
So we end up in a cast.
Another dad joke.
Excellent.
So I also want to thank the theater kids for coming out. I thought they looked amazing. The energy they brought was, you know, I think they did a good job selling the show. So I think they're probably going to get a few more attendees after their performance tonight.
I would also like to thank the theater show for coming tonight and chatting with us. Um, they do a great show every year and definitely if you get the chance to check it out, do so.
Same for me, but that's it. I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, kudos to theater, they were great. Awesome.
Yes, thank you to the theater students also, um, and to their parents for bringing them out on a cold evening and to the, the teachers and staff that helped do that.
Yeah, the number of volunteers involved is, is amazing too, absolutely.
And, and give these chan, these kids the opportunity to do this. So thank to everyone for their support. Uh, we do have a need for executive session this evening to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. We will return from the executive session only to adjourn our regular scheduled meeting. I'm seeking a motion to enter into executive session and this will require a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
That carries seven zero zero. Thank you and have a good night.